Oh, that's right.
Yep, we got a green light.
Mic check test, one, two. Check, test. Course it's gonna be a little bit delayed for you, Robert, so give it a minute. Check, check, test. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? You, what? You want me to keep talking? Okay. I don't know how loud this is gonna be for you, Robert, but can you hear me? We're just gonna be talking blah, 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 blah. We doing alright? Do what? Gonna bump it up a little bit? Well. Check, test, one, two, test, test. Check, test, test, test. Mic checked? Do what? How's it sounding in the house? Check, chest, test, one, two, three. Mic check, test. How's it sounding in the house, Robert? Testing, one, two, three, testing. Mic checked, Lecter and mic. This is the mic and this is... Do we need more audio on it? Or how you doing? Bump it up a little bit more, I guess. Check, one, two, test, one, two. We got, we got four minutes, Robert, so you better get this figured out pretty quick. It's all gonna be on you, man.
Makes you happy?
How easy it is.
You know, I gotta look at it, I gotta look at it. No, we're not just... We done the last five.
Oh, it's not gonna be empty, no way.
Good, how are you?
Twenty-nine, huh?
Yeah.
Lot of buzz.
Lot's of buzz.
Lot of buzz.
Not a job for the, for the light-hearted, is it?
Hey Larry, I just forwarded an email from Gary Goss, and I felt it was from Gary Smith, so ignore it. I've been forwarded...
How are you?
Hey, what is this? This is the PowerPoint? So let me ask you, we sent our financials to Shelley, right? Shelley, you've got our financials, and I wanna pull up, right? I'm sorry? But that's a file, not a paper.
Well, it is a file. She said he'd copy that as well, I did, that way I know where to go.
Okay, okay. Alright, good, good, good. Okay.
I did it all myself. Uh, it was probably not as painful for us. But it was nothing like you would expect.
So where are you up in the...
Where do you call it, Stan? I think it's pretty good.
Yeah, they probably get you a... What's up, man?
My people sent me today.
I got an email, you know Gary, this one?
Yeah.
Uh, when I phoned with that, Emily...
You know what, if you go to sleep, Nancy will take your budget away.
I know.
Just, just an accountant, so... She would never do that.
That's why I don't go to sleep around.
No, she said she won't do anything. We'll hear about you.
What would be, would be, is we would want, they're paying you to go, and you're going to give us the donation through your organization, your organization, and the organization is gonna give a chance to us. They're making out to South Campus. It would be good to get one big check from RWA, and then a bunch of big checks, and keep them front of you. They're gonna want to see. I don't wanna get them all, because they don't have a seat. So you take care of all that. I'll push your check, and it'll go to the donation, donation, which will be designated for the culinary students.
Is that a more...
If you were making money, you'd be like, yeah, but you're not. Not, not a hell of a...
I would like to call the meeting to order. I would like to call the meeting to order. How many of you participated in the Saks visit this week? Huh? Guess what? Congratulations and thanks to all of you. I know, sorta like the in-laws come to visit, you know? But, um, we've had a sneak preview, thanks to the chancellor, we're reading it on the way to the meeting in the car, like you're not supposed to, and we are really, really proud of all of you and thankful to you because we know it was just extra added time and effort, but I think we came out really well, and we appreciate you. So, let's get back to work.
Before you do?
Yes.
Speaking of Saks, where is Stephen Hexton? And where is Jill Poole? Now, you stand up, Stu, Jill. Stephen is our Saks liaison, everybody knows him, he did an absolutely wonderful job of leading us through all of this. And Jill Poole is our QEP leader, the fearless QEP leader, and she did an absolutely wonderful job of leading us through the QEP. So thanks to both of you, and thanks to each one of you in the audience, because I know every one of you played a very important role in getting that great report that we got today. So thank you, Ms. Appleman.
Absolutely. Uh, we do have one card, Nicole Chastang, I hope I did that correctly, is here to make a presentation. Ms. Chastang, if you'll come to this microphone, please, and make sure that the green light is on.
Thank you very much. Chancellor Johnson Hadley and board, thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Nicole Chastang. I'm here from the GED Testing Service in Washington DC. Um, the GED Testing Service offers the GED test, which is the nation's only nationally-accepted high school equivalency test. At the end of this year, we're going to be retiring the current test series to introduce a new one in 2014. And in September, we recognized the need for a large testing event here in the metroplex area to expand access to adult learners who wanted to complete their test before the end of the year. And we reached out, uh, all throughout the community, for partners to help us with that. And Dr. Robert Munoz and Tiffany Lopez of the Office of Continuing Education Services at the Trinity River Campus answered the call. Uh, they saw a need in the community and stepped up and said, "We'll help." That help consisted of providing testing, two testing events at their facility, as well as providing for registration and scheduling services at, uh, for all of our Dallas and Fort Worth testing. We did five events, and because of their efforts, because of the leadership and vision of Dr. Munoz and the work of Tiffany and her team, we tested over eight hundred students in this area who needed to complete their GED test. And I would just like to thank them on behalf of the GED Testing Service, and would like to ask, uh, President Fulkerson to join me to, uh, accept this award. If I could ask, yes, Dr. Munoz and Tiffany Lopez-Hamilton to join as well. The award reads, "GED Testing Service Community Service Award, Presented to the Office of Continuing Education Services, Tarrant County College, River, Trinity River Campus, in recognition of the dedicated support and service to adult learners in the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex demonstrated by the leadership and staff of the Office of Continuing Education Services who worked tirelessly to give a second chance to adults seeking to earn the State of Texas High School Equivalency Certificate by providing access to education and GED testing, November 2013." Thank you so much. We are, we couldn't have done this without your help. I had the opportunity to participate in one of these events and observe the energy and professionalism of Tiffany Lopez and her staff, um, and the appreciation of more than eight hundred adults who thank you along with us for providing this opportunity. Thank you.
Dr. Fulkerson, Dr. Fulkerson, would you happen to come here and take a picture?
Oh, okay.
Of all of the... Ms. Chastang, welcome to Texas. We are so very pleased to have you with us. So good to have you. And congratulations, Ms. Tiffany and Dr. Munoz, just like you guys, to reach out. We appreciate you. Ms. Chastang, you're welcome to stay for the rest of our board meeting and learn all the other wonderful things about us.
See from the Saks visit that things are going well here.
Things are going very well. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Um, next, the presentation on student access and success and administrative programs and projects from South Campus this week, this time?
Yes, and we have Dr. Peter Jordan, the very proud president of Tarrant County College South Campus, who is going to introduce that presentation. Dr. Jordan?
Thank you, Chancellor, Ms. Appleman, members of the board. Uh, I'd like to take, um, a little bit of a liberty upfront, uh, to try to represent my colleagues, the presidents, to say, uh, thank you to you, Chancellor, and board members for your visits to our campuses last Friday.
It's our pleasure.
We all hope that you're as proud as we are of all the improvements your decisions have made, uh, and it wouldn't be, uh, a celebration of our Saks visit without, uh, the decisions that you made to make improvements on our campuses and to help ensure student success. So we thank you for your good work. This evening, it is my privilege and pleasure, as the proud president of the South Campus, uh, to introduce Angela Sherry Snead, who is instructor of computer science. She's also chair of our Computer Science and Information Technology Department, and she's also mentor and coordinator of the Math Academy. Uh, this evening, she's gonna talk about one of those roles that she plays, which is her role as mentor to students in, uh, the Math Academy. Uh, the Math Academy serves as one of the many co-curricular programs around the district, and it represents the level of engagement that students and faculty, uh, have around this district to improve student engagement. Uh, so at this time, I'm gonna ask Angela Sherry Snead to come forward and tell you a bit about the Faculty Academy. As she comes, I also wanna make sure that we recognize another faculty member from the South Campus who is here with us, who is Mr. Paul O'Kellum, uh, who is a professor in the Business Department. Let's welcome Angela Sherry Snead to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Greetings to the Chancellor and to the members of the board. The state of Texas in general, and the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex in particular, have fallen far short of producing enough engineers to meet market demand. As the metroplex increasingly promotes itself as a high-tech corridor, higher education must be able to deliver on the demand for qualified engineers and related scientists. Although there are engineering programs in the metroplex, even rapid sustained growth of the programs at the University of Texas at Arlington and the University of Texas at Dallas will be woefully insufficient to close the projected engineering gap in the various professional fields with both bachelor's and master's degrees. This excerpt quoted from a request to the Board of the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board clearly summarizes the severe need and shortage of engineers and current graduates in the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex. These facts coupled with the documentation of state assessment of skills test comparisons showing that only fifty-three percent of ninth through eleventh grade students between 2003 and 2006 actually met standard in mathematics makes this challenge even more formidable. In order to address this challenge locally, in 2008, Tarrant County College proposed a project designed to infuse two hundred students directly into the mathematics engineering pipeline through a continuum from middle school through associate's degree and beyond. The project design consisted of a summer program and an on-campus academy, known as the Math Academy, with a proven curriculum, uh, developed to teach basic building blocks of mathematical concepts and applications of engineering using unique and innovative methods. The Sid W. Richardson Foundation agreed with the objectives of this program and opted to provide funding, which I'm sadly, sadly, sad to say, ended this past summer. I have provided more information and details about the Math Academy and how wonderful a program it is, but for sake of time, I won't go into that now, however, we did include it in the official presentation for, a report for official record. What I would like to do is show you all a video of the Math Academy, and so you can get a little bit more insight into, uh, this wonderful program and how it benefits our students. It's very difficult. It was difficult to put four years of the Math Academy into a five-minute video, but I thought it was very important to have some students here, that you can hear directly from them in terms of how the Math Academy has benefited them in their, not only their academic life, but also in their personal lives. First, we'll have Sarah Maury, and then Sonia Laris, and then Nadina Davis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sarah Maury. As head of the Math Academy, Professor Sherry Snead is more than just a leader to me. She was also my mentor. Her leadership skills through the Math Academy opened me up and brought me out of my shell. I became a new person with new opportunities. I went to places I never thought I could ever imagine of being a part of. She goes through extreme means to create opportunities of a lifetime for students and does it imaginably well. I'd like to thank her and all that she does for changing my life and my way of seeing college. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sonia Laris, and I am here to talk about the Math Academy under the leadership of Professor Angela Sherry Snead. Now, you can see, it took me a while to go, come back to college. Took me a long while, but I'm here, and I needed to experience something else that I have been experiencing, and Ms. Snead has been giving me the opportunity to experience the business world, something that is very new to me, opening the doors to a better tomorrow through the experiences that the Math Academy offers, the field trips, the companies that give us the chance to network with future employees. We got exposed to seminars, speakers, leaderships, where we got, where we learned to how to manage our business, even ourselves. Experience that helped you, helped me see the success, that success is not that far, and it can be possible. Our trips to Houston and New York, they were amazing. We were exposed to a whole new world of opportunities, and all this thanks to Ms. Snead and to the Math Academy. Thank you.
Greetings, Chancellor, members of the board. My name is Nadina Davis, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Math Academy about Professor Snead. There's so much that can be said about Professor Snead. She reminds me, when I think of her, of the song that Alicia Keys wrote, "I Am Superwoman." Because she does wear an S on her chest. She's just that superwoman. Whatever she put her hands to do, it prospers. She's dedicated, committed, passionate about her students and her work. She fulfills every role that she plays with grace and excellence. She's a wonderful wife, mother, instructor, counselor, friend. Thank you, Professor Snead, for fulfilling, fulfilling everything that you do to make sure that the lives that you touch excels at what they do. Thank you. Okay, I did not tell them to talk as much about the Math Academy. I told them to talk about the Math Academy. But it's very difficult to separate me from the Math Academy because it really is my heart and my, my passion, and so I am so grateful to everyone who, and you saw the names listed, who contributed to the Math Academy's, Math Academy's success and who gave me this opportunity to serve in this capacity. I just want to have a few closing remarks before I say a few thank yous, and then we'll move on. I was listening to the news this morning, and maybe you all saw this, that the Texas State Board of Education back in May passed a curriculum and testing law to make Algebra II optional for high school students, because too many students were failing the class Algebra II and dropping the course. And now they've decided to revisit that law because not everyone is pleased with it, and rightly so. Trade groups, of course, support the law because for them, they can get students into the workforce quicker, but bigger companies like Exxon and IBM are not pleased. They want their students to know how to do math and the complicated, complex mathematical equations and so forth. Math is inescapable. There is no way around it, and algebra specifically is the gateway to exploring and understanding the world around us. And so we cannot limit our students by circumventing math. It is not possible. We have to equip them with the tools that they need to succeed. So I am hopeful that we will continue to work together to provide our students with the tools that they need to succeed in math and, and also in their careers, and to not underestimate their ability to excel when they are properly equipped for success in the classroom and in programs like the Mathematics Academy. So again, I thank you for this opportunity. I want to also thank Chancellor Hadley so, so very much. I know her name was on the screen, but I appreciate you so much for graciously coming out and serving as our keynote speaker during our last closing ceremony for the Math Academy. And I just wanted to say that sometimes it helps our students to know that even the greatest among us still struggle and still have to overcome setbacks and still rise again, and so I appreciate you for opening your heart and yourself to our Math Academy participants. Dr. Jordan, thank you, thank you so much for this opportunity. At first, I was so grateful. I was surprised that he had chosen the Math Academy to showcase here this evening, and I kept saying, oh, that's so great. Then I thought, well, wait a minute. We are the best there is now. You did good. You did good by choosing us, and so I'm so appreciative again to you and for your support of the Math Academy from day one. Dr. Riddeau, I don't know if he's here this evening. We could not have made it to New York without him. I am so appreciative of our number-one fan and supporter here this evening. He is here just to support the Math Academy. Mr. Paul O'Kellum, I appreciate you so much for your support. I can call on him at any time, and he's there for us. Dr. Johanna Sharma, I appreciate you. I don't know if she's here this evening, just coming in and embracing the vision of the Math Academy. When I took over, became the program administrator for the Math Academy, I expanded the vision from just our weekly meetings and our field trips. And so I would go out and I would speak to students, trying to recruit them for the Math Academy, and at the mention of the word "math," they'd run the other way. So I had to strategize, and so what I did, I created our Math Academy logo, slapped it on a few t-shirts, and recruited students, and then they became my marketing secret. They began to go out and tell about the wonderful things that are happening in the Math Academy, and that's why I appreciate them so much, too, for partaking of the Math Academy, in the Math Academy, and also giving me the opportunity to serve them in the way that I do. It's a lot of work, but I, I appreciate the opportunity. I also want to thank Dr. Wendellin Morrison for being there, and just, she made me feel like she was wowed by our, our, our special day, and so I thank you so much for your inspiring words to us afterwards and for your support, and I just appreciate you so much for taking the time to be with us, and you've pretty much spent the entire time with us, and I, I appreciate that. And so I'm going to stop there again. The Math Academy's funding has come to an end, and so we are certainly hopeful that this organization, this, this program will be able to continue. And again, I want to thank you, Dr. Jordan, for giving us the opportunity to talk about this program and the amazing things that are happening with our students on the South Campus. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't get my mic to work. I might need to come to Math Academy. Yes, thank you. I was absolutely wowed. I am absolutely wowed. I am overwhelmed with the growth that I saw in the individual students. This is such an innovative, and I know we use that word so much, but this is truly an innovative program that must not end, and we must encourage not only the continuation of this program, but other programs like this that help people to see beyond their wildest thoughts and dreams and to open up new avenues of thought to them, to their lives, and of course, to their families. And when this happens for a person and for a family, it happens for our whole community. And often, people ask me, 37 years, how could you do this for 37 years? And, and what they see is they, they just think of me coming to meetings to take and vote, but what I see, went over 37 years, is the impact, the very small impact, and the great joy that I get from seeing the growth in so many of our students. I'm always talking about seeing people in the grocery store and other places where I'm in the community, and I'm just so fulfilled with joy when someone tells me that TCC has made a difference in their life, in their lives of their families. So I, I was wowed and overwhelmed. I never met this young woman before. I came and sat in that program, and I was just so gratified, and I'm so grateful for your vision and for your service and your commitment to the students. And so I know with all the creative minds and brain power that we have here, working together with you and Dr. Jordan, somebody's going to come up with something and say, think it, and it will happen, so we're going to work to help you make that happen. And thank you for coming and sharing it with the other, other board members, and now that you shared it with the board, you shared it with the entire community, and perhaps there's a company president or CFO out there who's in need of engineers and who will come forward and partner with us, as we had a wonderful partnering event earlier this week, and I'll wait until I'm called on to talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming and sharing a success story with us. We appreciate it, Dr. Jordan. And if you would like to stay, we welcome you, or you may be excused, whatever works for you. Thanks for coming. Another good report from Dr. Joe McIntosh and Mrs. Hadley on the Employees Care Campaign.
Thank you, students. Thank you. Mrs. Appleman and members of the board, we're pleased to have Dr. Joe McIntosh back with us tonight to give you really great news about our 2013 annual giving campaign, and since I have been at this institution forever and have watched us every year as we continue to be so benevolent to our communities, it gives me great pride in having him here tonight to share with you our latest story about employee caring.
Well, thank you, Chancellor, President Appleman, and the members of the board. I am here tonight to brag, and yes, but to brag on the employees of Tarrant County College, and specifically the faculty and staff and many represented here tonight. Great generosity, compassion, and care is a consistent theme that we talk about here amongst the family. We consistently talk about the stellar faculty and great commitment demonstrated by all TCC employees to student success, which is 100% accurate. But let me resoundly say, in the vernacular of my Tennessee uncle, TCC employees don't just talk the walk, they walk the talk, in their day-to-day work, but also with their pocketbooks. And Mr. Heed, as a favorite Rotarian friend of mine, tells me, you can generally look at a man or woman's pocketbook and see the value that they place on things by looking at their checkbook. Well, I can tell you tonight that the values employees here at Tarrant County College place on things are very demonstrated by what they have done as a part of the 2013 TCC Employee Care Campaign, the annual giving campaign. So let me give you a few of the details and a few of the specifics, all right? First of all, what is it? This provides the opportunity for TCC employees to make philanthropic contributions to support student scholarships through gifts to TCC Foundation and/or in support of the missions of the local community agencies through gifts to the United Way of Tarrant County. This is a one-time annual ask. This is a very important principle that we follow here at Tarrant County College. It's a district-wide campaign rolled out through the KELP groups. KELP members appoint a campaign manager and co-managers to lead the efforts of each respective KELP group. KELP members take an active role respective to their group's efforts. A key principle is leaders give first. A district-wide goal is established, and then a percentage of the district goal is allocated for each KELP division. And then the 2013 campaign, we publicly promote this during the period this year, October 1 through the 31st. We hold kickoff rallies and events to provide information about what the contributions of TCC employees help support and inspiration to participate, and there are a couple of photos of different things that happened across the campuses, and I think you may recognize a few faces there in the photos. Toro especially. A key emphasis is on participation, and as a collective group, TCC employees can make a huge impact in our community and on our students. This year, $214,922 in contributions and pledged gifts to support student scholarships and the work of agencies that the United Way of Tarrant County College resulted. This is an increase of $20,000 over last year's gift and commitments, and I saw somebody starting to applaud, so please go ahead. 957 employees participated. This is 43% of all TCC employees. Bottom line, our students and our local community say thank you, TCC employees. Now, let me add a few more statistics and a few, fill in a few more details. The southeast, five of our campuses exceeded their specific goals. The Southeast Campus, 107%, Dr. Capola. The Northeast Campus, 113% of goals.
Yay, Larry!
Trinity River, 116% of goals.
Yay, Tahita!
South Campus, 135% of goals.
Yay, Pete!
And guess what? Northwest Campus, 137%.
All right.
Now, five other divisions... Now, five other divisions also well exceeded a hundred percent of their respective goals. Now, there's another key fact. As mentioned, a key focus this year was on participation, and I'm pleased to report that the Poster Division, again, this year for the campaign, was the Real Estate and Facilities Division, led by Vice Chancellor Nina Petty's group and her campaign manager, DJ Massey.
Yay, Nina!
Now, they set an all-time record of eighty-three-point-eight percent of the employees of their division.
Yay, Nina!
Folks, that's, that's significant, when they have one of the largest divisions of employees within the whole college district. So Nina, congratulations. Now, last Thursday night, many of you attended our Annual Scholarship Recognition Dinner. This was a time when the recipients and the donors all come together for a time of connection and encouragement and inspiration. We refer this as somewhat of the joy of giving meets the joy of receiving, and many of you were there. There was a letter shared from one of the scholarship students, a recent graduate, graduated last May, and let me share just a brief few words that I think just kind of puts a bow around this and puts it all in perspective. Dearest donors, first of all, with your generous gift, you lifted an overwhelming financial burden off my shoulders. I hated to add any additional financial stress on my family, as five out of my seven siblings and I attended college this past year. But because you gave, I was able to use scholarships, federal financial aid, and some of my own savings to cover all the costs for my final year in nursing school. Secondly, your faith in the recipients of these scholarships is motivating. As I walked through the nursing buildings this past year on my way to and from class, I often heard some of the nursing instructors remind other faculty, "Have you donated to the scholarship fund yet?" More times than not, I heard them reply, "Yes, I have." Can you just imagine what all the great students are gonna do with their careers? Can you imagine all the people they're gonna help? The faith that you have in students amazes me. Because you believed in us to achieve unthinkable dreams and to overcome monumental challenges, you have motivated me to live up to the visions you hold dear for us recipients, to do great things with our careers, and to hate, help people around the globe. Lastly, donors, you've been the role models I needed in my life. I needed to know that it's possible to believe in people, perhaps people that you've never met before, enough to ignite vision and infuse passion. I needed to see people who cared about making a difference in other people's lives. I needed to feel that this calling to be more than a nurse, to be a nurse is more than just having healing hands in the work setting, it's more than that. It's about changing the course of lives, beginning now. Donors, TCC employees, for everything you have done, thank you. My prayer and hope is that someday I'll be just like you, giving, motivating, and believing. Chancellor, Board of Trustees, that's the end of my bragging report.
Thank you. That's what it's all about. We appreciate it. Have you shared with us, I was looking back at the minutes, and you talked about the wonderful success of the Cosby Event, but I don't see an announcement of the amount of scholarships that the foundation gave this year.
Well, well over a thousand, and...
Thousand scholarships.
Thousand scholarships, and well over valued a million-plus in dollars, yes.
Thank you, thank you, to your board and your staff, uh, and to all of you who participated in the campaign. Now, Suzanne Cottrow and Mr. Gates, Regional Gates, are going to tell us about their marketing plans for the coming year.
Thank you, President Appleman and Chancellor. Uh, I'll be very brief, because Suzanne is gonna bring the presentation, but I want to remind you of a couple of things, uh, that we've all said from time to time, we need to tell our story. Uh, so tonight, we're going to kind of roll out how we intend to do that. You'll recall several months back, you all approved, um, a four-hundred-thousand-dollar expenditure for us to buy, uh, placement within the marketplace. Uh, we'll come back to you probably at the top of the year, uh, we're about to expend the balance of that, and this will show you what we intend to do as we go forward. So Suzanne, if you would.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Chancellor, President Appleman, and members of the board. I'm very excited to share with you the work that we've been doing over the last six months to get to this point, where we actually have a comprehensive media plan and new creative to show you. Before I do get started, I want to say, um, a week before Thanksgiving, um, how thankful I am to have this opportunity. Um, I truly believe I've got the best job in the district, uh, to be able to craft and tell the story and share in different ways the great things we're doing to drive student success, um, to help people achieve their dreams, and certainly to be effective members of the community. So, um, advertising is a key component of that, so let's go. I came in at the perfect time, I think, because fortunately, we had a cease and desist on our previous tagline, which gave us the opportunity to sunset tomorrow starts here and come up with a new tagline develop, new tagline, which really, um, sort of informed the whole approach to developing a new look and feel for TCC. Um, we had worked with some outside folks. Um, I am so honored that we have the most incredible creative people in-house, both in my department, in web communications, in graphic services, and others, so we convened a brainstorming session to develop some new ideas for taglines. Uh, we came down to five, which we put out to a focus group this past summer. Um, focus group was conducted through, we're in conjunction with our institutional research folks, so we didn't spend any money on that. Um, three-thousand-three-hundred-and-twelve faculty, student, employee, and, um, administration members responded overwhelmingly. The new tagline was "Success Within Reach." Next slide, please. This shows you the actual whiteboard of that session. I was a very, a deliberate focus group, but "Success Within Reach," um, you'll see in the, kind of toward the, the right. So in thinking about how we wanted to pursue advertising differently, what we've historically had, at least in my evaluation, is image advertising, which says, "TCC is here." But when we think about where we really have opportunities to help more students, and, and tell a piece of the TCC story that's not widely known, um, we really have that opportunity to get to folks who don't think of themselves as college material. So while we would have the traditional, uh, outreach through CACO, sponsorships, other things, uh, to promote our academic programs, we really have a, a great opportunity to showcase our technical programs, where students can get in, get certified, get out, get jobs, support their families. Um, so the focus of much of the advertising over this next year is going to be on those technical programs, which will substantiate through saturated, direct mail, public relations, other channels, to really, to, to broaden that story. So we're not forgetting academics, but we just realize, even from the standpoint of success points, that those technical programs really will pay dividends. Um, another component is to show, this is what college looks like. Again, for students who anticipate, or who think college is sitting in a classroom, I don't like that, listening to lectures, I don't concentrate well, going home and reading, not my cup of tea, we want to show them the full array of, of great programs that are adventurous, exciting, and lucrative, that we can, that we can bring them into. And finally, it's to create aspiration, to use compelling imagery and verbiage that's not typically associated, associated with your typical college. So we don't want to sound like Wesleyan, we don't want to sound like, um, you know, Texas Women's University, or UTA, or Dallas, we want to, we want to have that vibrant look and feel that is so much a part of who we are. So the plan for the year starts with sponsorships. We're currently negotiating with, um, key hot, uh, high schools, Dunbar being one of them, to look at ways that we can really get in front of their students, whether it's buying ads in the student newspaper, supporting the sports program. We've got a couple of big high schools we've reached out to, um, they're not as responsive, I think they're a little dubious, like, "Why do you want to help us?" Um, but we are evaluating those opportunities. Secondly, uh, we are sponsoring events with a high return on investment, as measured by the cost per impression. That means how many people will see us, as a result of how much money we've spent. It also has to be relevant to the work that we do. So the first sponsorship was in, uh, September, we were the presenting sponsor of the Cumulus Radio's Putting Texas Back to Work Job Fair. We were there not so much to say we're employers, but to say, "We can help you get employed" by looking at these programs. It was a seventeen-thousand-dollar investment, the yield did more than seventy-thousand dollars in media value, um, in terms of eight-hundred-and-forty promotional spots across six radio stations, um, banners, and then just day-of signage and, and announcements. Um, next week, we will be the broadcast sponsor for the Parade of Lights, um, in downtown Fort Worth. We have a float, the theme is "The Gift of Knowledge." I've got an overwhelming number of students in the last day that have signed up to participate, so we will have students on the float, we will have students walking with the float, um, and, you know, we, we will get widespread coverage. The fifteen-thousand-dollar investment will yield approximately a hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand and change in media value. So to me, that is great visibility for a pretty small price tag, relatively speaking. Next, we have a comprehensive print, uh, campaign, beginning with Fort Worth Weekly, where we'll be in special issues specific to education. We've already been the front of the Education Guide, Best of, uh, 2013. That includes a section cover plus advertorial, so you have the actual ad, but then an opportunity for us to say more, so that's almost more of a PR feel. We're in La Vida, uh, twelve times throughout the year, at Quarter Page Ads, Through For Color, La Australia, Fort Worth Star Telegram Colleges and Universities Guide. Pulled back on the spend with the Fort, Fort Worth Star Telegram, because we get so much earned coverage with them, that it didn't make sense to spend a disproportionate amount of money advertising when they're already helping us tell our story. And then other, um, opportunities as we identify them. That's an example of one of our new ads, um, created completely in-house, and I'll get to that in a few minutes. Next, outdoor, and this is what I'm really excited about. Um, we've committed to six vinyl boards, we've got brand-new locations, um, the cost of the billboards includes production of two vinyls, so we will change at a six-month interval with a new campaign. But they're proximate to all of our, um, all of our colleges. We, we have three digital billboards where we can run all of our spots, because they rotate. So it's a lot of great exposure, I'm really excited that we're gonna be on I-30, coming into Fort Worth, that someplace is hard to get, we got it? So that's outdoor. This is something new for us. We are going to do a five-week pilot with cinema advertising, um, and we're going to do the, do it in February through early April, so that we're, we're, we're capturing, hopefully, the students on spring break, you know, who aren't really sure what they're gonna do for their summer. Okay, I, I can't tell if, if Mr. Greenhill likes this or not. Okay, um, so it's gonna be on-screen, thirty-second animated spots with voiceover, and, and certainly your talent would be welcome on that. Um, and then banners, uh, skyscrap and rectangle ads on the website for those cinemas. As you'll see, that's a very nice array across, uh, Tarrant County. That's a five-week run, and we're going to add a, a text component to that, so we can actually measure what kind of interest we're driving from that specifically, because it's a new spend for us. Interactive media, as, I am probably not as qualified as others to explain this, but I'm going to do my best, because it's really cool. So, you know how when you're, you might be on amazon.com, or you might be on Google, and you're looking at something, but you don't buy it, but you looked at it, and then you go somewhere else, you go to Facebook, and all of a sudden, there's that Google item that you were looking at, that just shows up? This is what interactive media is going to do for us, and there are a couple of different ways we do it. First is the behavioral intent, where, um, we scope and serve ads to those people who have searched using one of our keywords, whether, and we can put together a list of them, but didn't actually visit our site. So this is our sneaky way of saying, "We know you were looking for something like us, so here we are." Second one is, uh, site retargeting, where they may have visited our site, while they've been on another site, but they didn't click through, they didn't do anything, so we're gonna go and visit them on Facebook, or on Amazon, or on Zappos, and we're gonna encourage them to come and, and back and see us again. And then finally, custom contextual is, is really sophisticated, but that's where, you know, we have those programs or those words that we really want associated with us, like nursing, then there's a story that might run on USA Today about best nursing programs, poof, there's our little ad right there, right next to it. This is a very cost-effective spend, by the way. Next is radio. Very excited to report that, um, and Mrs. Appleman, I'm, I'm respecting you, I'm saying that we are not advertising with NPR, we are sponsoring NPR. Um, haven't done this before, we want to really be seen in, in that, you know, kind of next echelon, so it'll be a thirteen-week flight in the spring. Uh, we have eight spots per week, plus four bonus spots, so that's twelve spots a week, times thirteen, my math says a hundred-and-fifty-six total spots, and we've got a really nice rotation, so morning edition, I listened to it, I hope y'all do, marketplace, All Things Considered, and then random rotation over the course of the week. Another new addition to our media buy is cable television. We couldn't just buy CNN, because it was a really high cost per touch, and, I mean, just really, it's insane. So we looked at different options that included expanding, now this is a targeted buy, so it's specific to Tarrant County, but we will, we will purchase CNN, Fox Sports, yay, sports, uh, Travel Channel, uh, movie channels, CNBC, and MSNBC. This, you, I don't expect you to read, but the red shows, the red bars show, um, the timing of the placement, so you'll see that throughout the year, we have full saturation. We will, we will be present everywhere. What I want to share before I show you the coolest billboards ever, in my opinion, is that through this whole, uh, media plan that I've shared with you, not counting what we'll get in earned coverage, um, and other things that opportunistically will arrive, we will hit ninety-eight-point-five-million impressions from now until the end of August. That's a lot of eyes looking at TCC, so I'm really proud of that. Um, what I want to do next is show you our, our new billboard campaign, but I want to talk a little bit, um, and I'm doing this as fast as I can, about our current advertising. So as you all know, we've been focusing on TCC and me, and that was created to support our open house, our showcases last spring, and it got some traction. Um, from, from my point of view, it was more image advertising, it didn't really say, "Come and visit, come and look, I've got something for you." It was a little bit internal-focused, um, we did have nice exposure, and some of the boards are still up. Um, it, it took off with our students, so, you know, we've got T-shirts and other things where that brand continues. Interestingly, when I was doing the focus group testing for the new tagline, got a lot of insight from, from professors and others who weren't loving it too much, and said, you know, "Maybe we look at something else, just because of the grammatical piece of it." And as an English major, I kind of got that. So I said, "Well, let's look at some new things." Before we go into that, went through a lot of iterations, and I talk a lot, and I talk a lot to my team, and my team's neighbors. Wanted to introduce a few of those right now, because they were the brainchildren behind what you're about to see, all created in-house. So first, Sarah Rogers on my team, she's the new Marketing Communications Manager, stand up, please. Brandon Tucker, who's actually on Robert Heiser's team. Rita Parsons, who's PR manager, but gets involved in all stuff. And then Deidre Perez, she's our district photographer, who could not be here. One day, I was kvetching that I could not get what I wanted, but I had an image, and Brandon, hour later, came back and said, "What do you think about this?" And I said, "Oh, my God, it's brilliant." So then, the group of us went down to lunch, and we wrote the headlines for all of these, and we fine-tuned them a little bit, presented them to KELT, and I will, would like to see what you think. So going back to, we really want to focus on, next slide, our technical programs, we want to differentiate, TCC is a provider of programs, promote e-learning in weekend college, Dr. Morales, yay, and, uh, use compelling imagery and verbiage not typically associated with traditional college. I present to you our new campaign. The first, "You Are College Material" is honoring, um, both our academic programs, the notion that you can do this, and interestingly, this is a veteran, you'll note, from the Veteran Honor Courts. Next, online anytime. You have to see these, actually, this doesn't do justice, the, the photography is just brilliant, and on the digitals, it's gonna be stunning. The next, and we're, we're getting, hitting each campus, by the way, so this is the Radio Television Film, Direct Your Future. Probably a lot of people don't know that we have that program. Culinary at Southeast. Welding. That is our new outdoor campaign. And again, I can't say enough thanks to the creativity, it is such a blessing to be surrounded by people who, I mean, true employee engagement to me is when they take discretion, and people take discretionary effort outside of their day job, because they're that excited to make a difference, and we have that in spades, and I just, I'm so blessed. Uh, Brandon also created the image that you're looking at right now. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Suzanne and Mr. Gates. I, I can't believe I'm applauding billboards, but they are. Dr. Darlich, I know you're sitting there saying, "I knew she'd come around." But they are beautiful and brilliant. But they are beautiful and brilliant, and we thank all of you for your creativity and your work as a team. And I can't believe you're getting all that for what we gave you in money. Is that just one year's worth of budgeting?
Actually, it's, yes. And I'm still, I still have money to spend. So I'm being, but, you know, really trying to be everywhere we need to be, but to be really careful and thoughtful about when we're there. And, you know, billboard is always going to be the most expensive.
It is, it works. And I read them when I'm driving down the highway, too. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Now, we need to approve the minutes. So I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes which you have previously received in red. And are there any additions or corrections? If not, a motion to approve. Mr. Carter and second by Dr. Morrison. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? The consent agenda is four items. Consideration and approval of the core curriculum, consideration and approval of proposed revisions to the policy manual, consideration and approval of proposed policy changes to CJ Local and DJ Local, and consideration and approval of board renewal of trustee Mr. Carter to the City of Arlington Tax Increment Investment Zones 1, 4, 5, and 6. Any questions or comments? Need to pull any of these items? If not, I would ask a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Heed, second, from Ms. Vandergriff. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Committee reports. Mr. Carter, you want to start with Audit and Finance Committee?
Yeah, I think we'll have a little further report today. We received the annual audit. Found really no discrepancies of note to it. I'm sorry that you're receiving it so late. We're probably going to ask you to go ahead and approve it, its receipt tonight. But if you have any discussion items, then we'll discuss them at the next meeting.
And I think we can invite Mr. Fitz at this time to come to the podium and walk us through this as we pass it along. The report has been reviewed by the Audit Finance Committee, so it has received one
Chancellor, President Appleman, Board of Trustees, thanks for having me here this evening. So you now have this book in front of you. As President Appleman said, we have reviewed this before today with Chancellor and the District's Finance Audit Committee in some level of detail. And so given that it's 100 pages, we're going to take a little higher level here tonight. Just kind of hit some highlights. The first section's the introductory section, and really, the only thing I was going to point out there is on page Roman numeral 10. And that is the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This relates to last year's comprehensive annual financial report. It is an annual award you have to requalify for. This is the 21st consecutive year that the district has qualified, and we believe that the 2013 report will qualify as well. If we go to the next section, the financial section, starting on page one is the Independent Auditor's Report. And you'll see there at the top of the second page of the report on page two that we have issued an unqualified opinion on the financial statements. And there's some other paragraphs there, there are some other sections that we do audit and issue an unqualified opinion in relation to the financial statements that we've audited. And then there are other sections that are not audited, such as the statistical section and Management's Discussion and Analysis. Speaking of which, Management's Discussion Analysis starts on page four. And this is a really good overview of the activities of the district for the last two fiscal years, has some really good charts and graphs that are informative that Nancy and her team have put together. So it's a good read for a crash course on the last two years in the district. Anyone, please stop me if you have any questions at any time. Don't hesitate to just jump right in. Page 11, you'll see the Statements of Net Position. Just a couple of things I'm going to point out here. One is the title's different. For decades, it's been known as the Statements of Net Assets. Due to changes in accounting principles this year, it's now called the Statements of Net Position. When you get into the numbers on this statement, just one thing that I'm going to point out, if you see in Current Assets, the investments went down about $52 million from about 108 to $56 million. But if you look down in Non-Current Assets and the investments in the first line there, those went up $52 million. So it's not a decrease in the position in the investments, it's a change in investment strategy to try to maximize investment income. And then if you go to the second page of that statement on page 12, you'll see that the net position, formerly known as net assets, which is just the assets in excess of liabilities, bottom line there is just over $1 billion, which is noteworthy because this is the first year that the district's net position has exceeded $1 billion. The next statement is on page 13, Statements of Revenues, Expenses, and Changes in Net Position. Again, just a couple of highlights there. Operating revenue was pretty much flat with last year. Operating expenses were up about 5%. And then one other thing I'll point out, again, related to investments. And the numbers really are not big compared to the other numbers, but it may be noteworthy to the reader. And that's, last year, there was investment income of 1.1 million. This year, there's investment loss of 1.1 million. That's what we would call a paper loss, an unrealized loss. And what that means is the district has not actually incurred a loss, and the district invests in fixed income securities that it always holds to maturity. So what I'm saying there is that if the district continues with that policy of holding these investments to maturity, no actual loss will be incurred. So just wanted to clarify that for the reader. And then you'll see the bottom line there, the increase in net position is $41.2 million for fiscal year 13. Kind of skip ahead a little here, the notes to financial statements start on page 15. Nothing very significant that's new or different there, so I'm not going to point anything specific out there, but those just kind of give you a little more information on the notes in the financial statements. There are some supplementary data that starts on page 38. I'm not going to go through those either, but those are additional financial schedules that are not required by generally accepted accounting principles, but the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board wants to see them. And really, what these do are break out the numbers that we've seen in the exhibits that we just went over into a little more detail so the coordinating board can accumulate that data. Page 47 starts the statistical section. This, as I mentioned before, is an unaudited section. But it gives you a good idea on some trends in the district. In most cases, the information is for the last 10 years. The first, I think, three tables are financial in nature in that the numbers come from the exhibits that we just went through. But there are other tables here that talk about, that show you tuition for the last 10 years, and taxpayers in the district, and the tax base, and debt information, and some things like that. So it's a good history of the last 10 years. And then the last couple of sections start on page 85, the Federal Single Audit. This section deals with federal grant funds that the district receives and expends during the fiscal year. You'll see on page 87, for fiscal year 13, the district expended $124.4 million in federal awards. Just for your reference, last year, that number was $119.5. So slight increase there. On page 89, you'll see our report on an Internal Control Over Financial Reporting. And you'll see there in the third paragraph in that first section that we did not note any material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting. If there were any significant issues of that nature, they would be here. But the good news is that there were no such issues noted in the audit, and so there were nothing to report there. There are a couple of other paragraphs there on Texas Public Funds Investment Act and other laws and regulations, and there are no issues noted as far as significant non-compliance to report there. The next page, page 91, is our report on compliance on the major programs that we audited. As you know, each federal grant does not get audited. A lot of that's dictated by the amount of the grant, how much you expend during the year. What we audited for fiscal year 13 on the federal side covered, I think, 99% of the total federal awards. And you'll see our opinion on the bottom of page 91 was that, an unqualified opinion that we feel like there are no significant issues with compliance. And the same with Internal Control Over Compliance, no significant issues noted there either. The last section is the State Single Audit. And you'll see on page 95, total state expenditures of $5.5 million compared to $4.8 million in the prior year. And again, on page 97, no compliance issues to report, so that's good news. Do want to say that we got excellent cooperation and preparation from Nancy and her team, and Mark and his folks throughout the audit. And it takes a lot of work on their part for this book to get published and for us to be able to issue an opinion on the financial statements. We had no material adjustments in the course of performing our audit. So kudos to them, and we appreciate it.
Any questions of Mr. Fitz or Mr. McLendon, Ms. Chang?
I guess we appreciate your efforts. Thank you so much. It was, I think almost anyone could probably review this in an hour and 90 minutes. It struck me that it would provide really an excellent sort of base foundation for next year's budget discussions because it has not only all the new programs that we've had over the last couple of years, but it has student demographics, it has our revenues, our expenses. By the way, shows very, very few problems that we have. So at any rate, unless the board has some more discussion, I would make a motion that we adopt this. And I would hope that all of our trustees would take a look at it and see if you want to discuss any of the things that are next meeting. I also would like to recommend that these be put in all of our campus libraries just for easy access.
A motion from committee therefore not requiring a second, that the report be approved is...
Adopted.
Adopted, excuse me. Is there any additional discussion questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Fitz and Mr. McLendon, and Ms. Chang here.
She's back there.
I think, I think, we might want to post it on the website as well. Might be already.
The Governance Committee, anything else, Mr. Carter? The Governance Committee did meet and reviewed the agenda for the evening. The one thing that is unfinished business, and we would ask that the board allow us to return to, is as a taxing entity, we are, have the privilege of electing the directors, the five directors of the Tarrant Apprecial District. And we have received a list of nominees, people who are going to run for the office. And we're doing some intel on them. And so if the board would agree to return, we have until December the 20, the 14th, and our next meeting's on the 12th. So on the 12th, we would like to bring you our recommendations for the board members and get your vote at that time. And that gives us adequate time to submit the votes to the Tarrant Apprecial District, if that's agreeable with everyone.
I don't know if everybody follows that, but the way it works is that you have, your vote is proportional to the taxes you collect county-wide. Would make an interesting change in democratic governance if anything was that way, wouldn't
All right, we will table this until the December meeting. Institutional planning, Mrs. Vandergriff?
No report tonight, but we'll be meeting next Tuesday. So we'll have one in December.
Thank you. All right, we can move on then to item number nine, the Report on Annual Renewal of Insurance Coverage. Mrs. Hadley, Mrs. Robinson, and Mr. Payton.
Madam President, while Ms. Robinson is coming to the podium. I was going to say something about financial report when it came to the agenda, but you all, no, Mr. Carter did it already up in his report, but that's okay. It doesn't matter. It got adopted. I just simply wanted to say that this is absolutely an excellent piece of work. We continue to get awards for our financial reporting every year. And it is so, I think, as Mr. Carter said, it's so detailed, it gives you a really good picture, not just of the numbers numbers, but what's behind the numbers and what we get from that. And I just want to publicly thank Nancy Chang and her team in the finance area under our CFO for not just being cooperative with the accounting firm, but the audit firm, but also for all of the extra care that goes into producing this report. So thank you, Nancy, thank you, Mark, and all the rest of the team for this great report. And now Angela is going to, she's already up there, to report on our insurance coverage. Angela?
There is a slight increase in our premium this year, and I'm going to have Michael Payton, who's our Director of Risk Management, explain the reason for the $71,000 increase.
Mr. Payton, welcome.
Good evening, Chancellor, members of the board. I've provided a premium comparison sheet in your packet that includes recommendations for renewal. All of the policies are renewals with no change in terms or conditions this year. The total premium, as Angela mentioned, is an increase of $71,000. That's primarily due to growth of the district, including acquisition of the Alliance facility. All the policies do expire next week on November 30th, so I ask for your consideration and approval for me to bind.
I note a sense of urgency in your voice.
Short and sweet.
Is there a motion to approve Mr. Recommendation, Mr. Heed, and second, Mr. Carter? Discussion, questions?
No, I just was going to suggest that he clarify the type of insurance coverage that he's speaking about.
These are property and casualty insurance coverage for the district, not including health insurance or other employee benefits.
Thank you. I think that's an important distinction.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excuse me, item number 10, Mrs. Hadley and Mrs. Robinson.
Ms. Robinson is going to give you, I suppose, an admission if you haven't, if you're being recalcitrant, but she's required, I think, to make this report annually on behalf of the state laws of Texas. Angela?
Right. Texas Education Code requires that the minutes of the last regular meeting, which this is, reflect whether each member of the governing board has completed any training required by this section. And I have verified that all members have completed the training required.
Thank you.
Thank you, so we're all legal. Thank you.
Item number 11, update on the South Campus Energy Technology Center Construction Manager at Risk Selection Status.
Nana Petty is up.
Good evening, Chancellor and Board of Trustees. I wanted to take just a second before we get into our items to recognize one of our employees in the real estate facilities area, Jessie Herrera. Come on up, Jessie. Won an award with the City of Fort Worth for Steer Fort Worth Urban Development Task Force. I'm not sure how many of you know about Steer Fort Worth, but it's Mayor Price's group of young professionals that she's brought together to focus on areas of concern and issue around the community. And there was recently a contest that they did in Steer Fort Worth in this urban development task force to educate the community on the importance of creating and encouraging sustainable development in the Fort Worth central city of the 16 planned urban villages. Mayor Price actually judged the submissions live at a party in... Mayor Price actually judged the submissions live at a party in the East Fort Worth Six Points Urban Village earlier, and Jesse was recognized for, next slide, his architectural rendering of a reimage of the Berry Street Theater. And actually, the quote is, and if you go to their website, you'll read Jesse blew us away with his vision for the Berry Street Theater. He envisioned a mecca of art and theater combined with beautiful and balanced modern design. We can see this project become a reality. Jesse's a project manager, again, for us in our construction services area, and I just thought this was important enough to recognize him here tonight and to just say, what a great job, Jesse. Glad to have you.
I'll keep it short and sweet. Thank you, Chancellor and Board of Trustees, and I want to thank you, Nina and Gary, for giving me the opportunity to work in an environment where I can take my skills that I learn at my job and apply them to community improvement. So thank you all, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, we have Jesse representing us out in the community. I know he's going to continue his efforts with Steer Fort Worth, and he comes back and reports to our group about all the great things that are going on in our community at the City of Fort Worth.
Mr. Payton, don't let him run off. I guess I don't know what Berry Street Theater, his project is. What is that?
Jesse, want to tell us?
Berry Street, uh, it's the Berry Street Theater, actually used to be called the White Theater, I believe, until, I don't remember the exact year, but it was, it used to be the White Theater, and it was decommissioned, I believe, in the nineties, and it's just been sitting dormant for the past decade, two decades.
Tell them.
It's right off the intersection of Berry and Hemphill, right on the Hemphill corridor, and it's been an abandoned building for many years now. There used to be a restaurant right next to it, and I believe there's a hair salon still there, right across the street from the Travis Avenue Baptist Church.
When you're going west on Berry, you have to look to the right. This is, you go through the intersection, it's right on the right.
And now you can imagine what it would look like if you...
That's a huge change, Jesse.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for your time on that. And then moving right along to our agenda item number eleven, this is a information, oh, and I just also wanted to point out, transform tomorrow, two thousand thirteen, report from the community Steer Fort Worth, and Jesse's got a big old page right in the middle of it, so, anyway, that just came out. Item number eleven is, this is really an informational-only piece to tell you about our energy technology building and where we are in the process. Since we last reported to you, unfortunately, we were informed that our team that we had originally selected for the project would no longer be able to maintain their joint venture agreement, and, um, well, sorry about that. I'm getting all kinds of alerts about our weather tonight, that we have a, I don't know if everybody's getting them on their phone, but there is a storm now that's coming into the air. Sorry for the distraction. So, working with our legal department, we made a decision that we would have to terminate the agreement with Bell Four B D, Vendime, and request a new selection for our construction manager at risk that went out on September eighteenth. And we are in, we've received final submissions. Your memo says that we had two, we actually had three, but one of them was non-responsive to it, so we're down to two, and our team is working furiously. And I wanted to let you know this because we are hopefully going to come to you in December, maybe January with this contract, and again, every drop's got to hit in the bucket, so we're wanting to just sort of inform you so that when we bring this to you possibly in December and have you review that contract, you won't be surprised because you'll be all festive at our December board meeting before our Chancellor's holiday luncheon, so. Any questions on that item? Okay, our next item is actually a voting item number twelve, and it's an energy item, and it's a request for board approval on a buy-board cooperative agreement with Facility Solutions Group for a purchase of lighting fixtures, and this is for the district. It is a state mandated initiative and for a reduction of our energy consumption, and it's for a hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-six cents.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. I mean, move to approve.
Dr. Morrison, Ms. Vandergriff, second. Discussion, questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item thirteen is for our third math aporium that's going in at the Trinity River Campus, and this is for a contract with Bennett, Benner, and Pettit to provide construction documents. It is for a not to concede, not to exceed contract for a hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, and we're asking for you, and of course, on the tour, you saw Friday, you saw the South Campus and the Northwest Campus, and we're hoping the Trinity Rivers will be just as beautiful as those two campuses. Your approval, please?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Heed, second?
Second.
Mr. Carter, any discussion, questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item number fourteen is a request for approval for a contract with Jacobs Engineering for our brand-new, what we're calling Alliance Transportation Logistics Building, but I don't know that that's our official name. Our acronym for it is OWTL, which stands for Off-Site Northwest, W is for Northwest, Transportation Logistics Building, and we use that acronym really for our catalog, for first response and safety, but we are going through a process with our naming to come up with the official name, so I know some of you had questions about that. This contract is for three hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. I do want to point out that this, what we did with this contract is we combined the full construction documents, construction administration, for a huge scope, which is architectural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural, civil, fire protection, audiovisual and information technology, energy services, and felt like this was the best value of combining all those things instead of doing a whole lot of smaller contracts. So that's why the scope of this and how much it is. So we appreciate your approval of this contract.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Heed, second?
Second.
Dr. Morrison, any questions or comments? Discussion?
What is the lease, what is the lease course at Meacham, the cost?
The cost at Meacham is approx, it's on a month-to-month. We pay for a hanger portion of around six thousand dollars and another two for ground, so combined, it's about nine thousand, a little more than nine thousand dollars a month for that, and it's on a month-to-month, and we can cancel that with a, whatever I think, a thirty-day cancellation.
Okay.
So around a hundred thousand.
We're not going to have to make any of the improvements that they suggested?
Oh, the three-plus million? No. Aren't we happy? We're spending that on our new Bell facility, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, and we're going to be eager to move in, and of course, the timing of that is we're due to get that building over and around April, so.
Other questions? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Okay, now, item number fifteen.
We're very excited about item number fifteen because it's for our early college high school for the Southeast Campus, and this is a change order, but I wanted to explain that what we did was a pre-construction, zero-value contract, so there was no value to the contract originally, and so this is the first value that we're bringing you, and it's for nine million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two. It is with Steel and Freeman. Some folks of you remember the number thirteen million, which is our budget for this. This is a construction contract, which does combine some of Mr. Marshall's area of IT, about half of the budget there. The other half, which is not in this contract, will be computers and hardware and some of the AV equipment. Other things that aren't in this nine million are professional fees, engineering, furniture, fixtures, but we're asking you tonight to approve the contract, and we're hoping that you will sign it tonight so we can get started tomorrow on this contract. We've got about seven months of construction to do to get our students in there next August, so.
They don't sign it, I do.
You do. That's true. Approval so that you can sign it.
Mr. Carter moves to approve item number fifteen, early college high school. Mr. Greenhill, second. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Vandergriff?
I would just like to say, during the tour last Friday, I had a very enlightening conversation with Dr. Coppola, and I was just wondering if you would share some of those thoughts to the board. I was talking about Mansfield ISD and how that relates to the early college high school, and he was really enlightening in terms of a program that he's offering them and how it works with the early college high school.
Thank you, Ms. Vandergriff, board members, Chancellor. Southeast Campus is just, first of all, very honored and proud to start with the early college high school with Arlington ISD. I think we're, the way we're positioned, we have both Mansfield and Arlington, two very progressive ISDs that have large dual-credit programs that we feed. As you know, there are three models that I talked about at one time with you for an early college high school with TEA. There's the standalone model that is really under the auspices of the ISD. There's a school within the school model, and then there's a multi-district model, which is really under the auspices, auspices of the IHC, Institute of Higher Education. With the standalone models with Arlington, Mansfield, in the, in the, working with transparency as we do within this district, I've worked with Mansfield to let them know every step of the way what we're doing, we're working with, trying to work with them with an accelerated dual-credit program, which is a program with tenth, which is not unusual, we're doing it right now with Mansfield and Trinity River, where students in the eleventh and twelfth grade go into a cohort of students that can exceed the six hours as a cohort, which can, hopefully, then within that time will graduate with the forty-two-hour core. Is that what we talked about?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to make sure. If we talk about anything else, just let me know, and I'll be glad.
There were two other interesting concepts, I thought Mansfield has a higher dual-credit enrollment.
Yeah, Mansfield has about twelve hundred students, unduplicated headcount and dual-credit, and AISD, that's about eleven hundred. They're really catching up now because of the work with Dr. Jordan and the, and the technology dual-credit.
And the other, the other concept that I thought was interesting was the fact that we really can't have two schools, uh, two independent districts.
Right, Mansfield's, in Mansfield's taxing district, and Arlington's in Arlington's taxing district, and since they're both large, with sixty-five and thirty-five thousand students, you can't combine the two.
Whereas Northwest, smaller sites, so.
Other questions or comments from the board?
No, I just, I was going to note that the Chancellor continues to talk with Arlington School District to try to squeeze a few more dollars out of them for participation in this project, and she's making good progress.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your support.
Before you vote, Madam President, on this item, I just want to, you already know this, but I want to get it on the record, because when you give me permission to sign the contracts and the MOUs, just remember that this, of course, brings with it the cost of utilities and those kinds of things on a go-forward basis, on a month-to-month basis, but then you understand that we can't have a facility without paying those costs, but I just want to let you know that because sometimes it'll be over a hundred thousand dollars, the total operational cost with utilities, so. Just wanted to get that on the record.
I, uh, I recognize everything that we do, the cost of maintaining it on.
But, but it's in the budget, right?
Right, yeah.
I feel, always feel compelled, if there's anyone in the room who's new to us, never visited with us, never watched us in action, please know that all of these items and these high-dollar items that we're voting on, that we have had the information for a week.
And it comes with a summary that gives you the who, when, where, why?
Right, and so we, this is not the first time we've seen this material or this information. We've had time to read it, study it, ask questions, and hopefully get our answers questioned, but of course, we can do that again here at the table, and we appreciate your bringing Dr. Coppola forward. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of item number fifteen, construction of the Southeast Campus Early College High School? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? You've got some new real estate, Doctor.
I, I just, I must say one other thing, you know, I'm just so excited about this early college high school that's coming on, you know? We started out, we were bragging, bragging. We had it on Northwest Campus, we started with that one ISD, and it, it got off to a great start on a shoestring. We pretty much had no money, and Dr. LeBlanc made it work anyway with Lake Worth, and then later Fort Worth ISD joined, and then we got the Texas Academy of Biomedical Sciences, early college high school with Fort Worth ISD for our Trinity River Campus, and the students there are in their, beginning their third year this year, the students on Northwest beginning their third year, fourth year, have a few students who are going to graduate in May with associate degrees, and same thing's going to happen with Trinity River, and now we're about to get the one on Southeast Campus. Dr. Darlage is just two steps behind Dr. Coppola and working on getting one on the Northeast Campus. I met with the superintendent, uh, Grapevine Colleyville, with Dr. Darlage last week, I guess, and he's just about as excited as Larry and I are about getting that early college high school there off the ground. And of course, Mr. Walter Dansby is, is nipping at Dr. Jordan's toes, heels, I guess it is, ready to start some talks about the early college high school on South Campus, which would give us one on every campus. That's phenomenal, that's absolutely wonderful. Another way that we're giving more access to students with the possibility of being significantly more successful. So, board members, thank you so much for your visionary leadership in helping us continue to reach out to our communities, so thank you for this vote tonight.
Thank you for your approval.
Item number sixteen, consideration approval of purchase of firewall security. Mr. Marshall?
Good evening, Chancellor, President Appleman, and the board. Item number sixteen is an agenda item, request for board approval for the purchase of firewall security devices from Solid Border. We are in the process of quintupling our internet capacity. Every day, it grows. Our students and our faculty find more inventive ways of gathering information off the, the world wide web, and we are actually moving to re-engineering, and this will allow us to protect those new circuits that you'll see me ask for later on. This will allow us to not only protect with devices, but also licensing and services. It's a high-end expertise that, it's very difficult to hire individuals, so we hire services. The amount is one hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Mr. Heed, seconded by Ms. Vandergriff. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen is a request for board approval for surveillance software upgrade plan with Securadine Systems. This software is used to gather information off of our security cameras and make it available to not only our security staff, but they can allow other agencies to have access to it on demand. That cost is one hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and three dollars and seventeen cents.
Motion to approve the upgrade purchase with Securadine Systems. Some of, Dr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Heed. Discussion, questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eighteen, Cisco.
Number eighteen is request for board approval, purchase of Cisco SmartNet Service Contract from Flare Data Systems. This is our insurance policy for our entire Cisco networking, so when something goes bump in the night and it fails, we have access to hot spares and support staff that can install it. It's for a hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-two cents.
Motion to approve item number eighteen. Mr. Heed, seconded by Ms. Vandergriff. Any discussion, questions? Mr. Carter?
I don't have a discussion. The previous question, let me just give you a second. How many surveillance cameras do we have?
At current count, it's seven hundred and ninety-nine. I anticipate with the early college high school and Bell to have close to another hundred. The Bell facility will, it's a large facility, it's got a lot of corners.
So nine hundred or so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just curious.
Um, we, we want to standardize on the ones that we use. They might have a few, a lot of their security was internal and not external, but we, it's hard to mix systems, so even if they had some, we would actually remove them, see if our contractor would take them and trade. They have done that with us in the past when we've removed old equipment, but we want to standardize on the same camera because we can buy the same licensing, it works with the same software.
Motion to approve the recommendation of Cisco SmartNet Service with Flare Data Systems. Ms. Vandergriff, second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I lost my place. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number nineteen.
Thank you. Number nineteen is request for board approval of the purchase of Microsoft Campus Agreement from Digital River Education Services Incorporated, also known as Journey Ed. This is for our entire Microsoft licensing, all the operating systems, all the office applications, and this is the home and, the home use for our faculty and discounts for our students, and it's at two hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Motion to approve Mr. Marshall's recommendation of purchase of Microsoft.
Don't move.
Agreement. Mr. Carter, is there a second? Dr. Morrison, any discussion, questions? Dr. Morrison, any discussion, questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? One more.
Number 20, it's the request for board approval of the purchase of internet connection from AT&amp;T and Charter Communications. This is the actual circuits that will be in place on, for the campuses. Trinity River, we've already done that as part of a, a previous migration, so the other four campuses will be getting the expanded internet connectivity. We decided to go with two vendors because it supplies us what we call circuit diversity, so if at any one time Charter has an issue with their two circuits, we can take that traffic and move it over to AT&amp;T and vice versa. The total value is $145,380.80.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Heed, second. Dr. Morrison, discussion, questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McLendon and Ms. Hadley, furniture.
Uh, Mark is, is next on that. I just wanted to remind you once more of just how sophisticated this district has to be with, you know, when you're serving over 100,000 students throughout Tarrant County, you have to be really diligent about how we operate. You just got to bid on the insurance, and now Tim didn't spend quite a million dollars tonight, maybe I didn't add it quite right, maybe already a million, but it's a very expensive proposition, but that's what it takes to do business today. And now Mark's gonna spend over a million buying furniture. Mark?
All right, good evening, Madam Chancellor, Madam President, trustees. I, the reason I'm coming to tell you is that we continue to challenge ourselves to look at better ways for cost, and we're, we're not satisfied, we'll never be satisfied. We will always try to look for better costs for them, and we've done it in some areas that we have done. So I've asked, I've charged Mike to do what's called commodity purchasing. So what we did is we consolidated the purchases of all furniture for a year and went out to market, and I, I want him to tell you the rigor he went through and what the result is.
How you doing, Mike?
Still hobbling around.
Still hobbling?
Yes.
You look good.
Oh, well, thank you.
Glad you're here.
Oh, Chancellor Hadley, Ms. Appleman, and members of the board, historically, here at TCC, we purchased our furniture using cooperative agreements, primarily the Texas Multiple Award Schedule, known as Texas Moss. Texas Moss contract's a competitively bid contract, and, and it's priced, tiered pricing based on the dollar amount you spend for a particular order. Most of our orders here at TCC, I say most, you know, they vary, you, you see some that come to you, they may be $100, $120,000, some may be, you know, they're a lot, they're $20,000, $30,000, $40,000, $50,000. Well, a lot of them are small, the total dollar that's, that we spend in a 12-month period sometimes is two and a half, three million dollars. So what we wanted to do is try to leverage that two or three million dollar spend versus getting discounts where we're only, you know, buying $25,000, $30,000 worth of furniture at a time. So what we did is we went out with our effort with an RFP requesting pricing of the different brands of furniture we buy district-wide. You know, we work very closely with the facilities group, and there's 13, 14 different brand, manufacturers, brands that we use at any one time throughout the district. For example, the chairs you're sitting in may be one brand, while the chairs out here we use may be completely different, or the desk may be something different, whether it be steel case or all steel or whatever. So we put those out, put the RFP out, we received five responses. Because all vendors can't, or are not certified or allowed to bid on every brand of furniture, what we're doing, we're recommending that we make an award on the RFP to three separate vendors to cover all 13 brands, in this particular case. This spreadsheet that's attached to your agenda item will show you the breakdown of how, how we're recommending it be awarded. We recommend the award of the, of this RFP 13-050 to Wilson Project Management, Business Interiors, and Intelligent Interiors, per the attached schedule of pricing, not to exceed a total spend for the year of $3 million. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve. Some move? Mr. Greenhill, second?
Second.
Ms. Vandergriff, the memo says not to exceed 3 million per year, but I, I'm having trouble finding out how many years is.
One, one at a time. If we decide to go forward the following year, we'll come back to you.
Okay, so it's for the coming year?
For, for this year, from here through August 31st, 2014.
Okay, we might.
This budget year.
Want to change the title on that memo to clarify.
How much do you anticipate to save during this?
Not as much as I'd hoped.
[laughing].
What, what we found was, one, the Texas, Texas Multiple Award Schedule that we've used is a pretty competitive contract. You know, we were hoping to, to leverage that spend, unfortunately, the manufacturers control that, not necessarily the people we buy the furniture from, the resellers, and they still tier it, they still make it tiered, and if you're not, even though you're, you may order two, $2 million, and our problem with this is, we can't tell manufacturer A. that we're gonna spend $2 million because we've got 12 or 13 that we're using. So, we saved, you know, one, one and a half percent, maybe across the board on average, over, over the Texas Moss, but that's as good as we were able to get. There were a few exceptions, there were a few items we just happened to buy an extremely large quantity of here at TCC, and the manufacturers knew it, and the resellers knew it, and we got deeper discount on those, but by and large, it's about one to one and a half percent.
Other questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. We wish you well, continued good progress.
And by the way, I appreciate very much the get well card after my surgery from the street.
All right, Mr. McLendon, we're ready for the monthly financial report.
Good evening, once again, this is my pleasure to share with you the financials. Oh, keep going, keep going. Okay, all right, we're gonna go ahead and let's go to the revenue section. What we have done is, in the previous, as we do every month, we look at the percentage of spend, and then we will go through every single item that goes beyond, so we're gonna try to look at items that are above the 20% spend on each side. So the first thing I want to bring to your attention is, is you look at the interest return, that item right there, that's, all that is, is mark-to-market. Mr. Fitz addressed that, showing that when you take your long-term, if you're taking your investments to maturity and you show it at that month, it's actually going, if you looked at the end of the year, we showed a negative, now it's going to a positive, but again, that's not realized till you sell that, that actual bond, all right? The other thing is, we want to show you on our revenue that we are sitting right now in 15%, and I think that's good. It's, our revenue is coming just as we projected, it's very predictable, so I would say that we're doing well there, all right? Now, we're gonna take you through a couple of our expenditures that are probably above, that are noticeable, and we're gonna, the first one that we wanted to show you was technical processing, is that right? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I had the pages back. The first one is information and technology, and you're gonna see about 27%, and what it is, basically, the reason that that's above the 20% is, those are year-end adjustments. What happens is, we'll go in and we'll put them in, we'll, we'll close out the year, you bring them back, and we have some additional encumbrances, so that's why it's pushing that spend above that amount. The next one, you're gonna see mail and telephone, and as you see, that's 63%, which is a higher percent than 20 that you would expect, and what you, if you notice right there, it's all encumbrances, so when we put it in an encumference, according to modified accrual, we're covering a lot more periods. So that's why it's showing that you have more spend than you would have at this period, but it's covering more periods, so that's just because of the modified accrual. The same thing is gonna go to our facility leases, you're going to see that we're sitting on 84%, and that's because we typically accrue by contract, so it, it covers more than one period rather than, so by modified accrual, we are, we're doing, but we want to cover every single item for you, and we analyze this on a monthly basis. The next one is clerical duplication, it's sitting on 96%. Again, those are encumbrances, as you will notice, we're encumbering 1.7 mail, so again, that's, that's why it's driving that number. The next one coming down will be district support at 41.5%. Basically, what we have there is we have prepaid expenses on that support, that's what's driving that number so high on the cost on our support, okay? On the next page, our technical processing will be the next one, sitting on 36%. Again, that's covering, what we have right there is covering for the entire year on some of the processing costs that we have there. And custodial services, warehouse and vehicle operations, and utilities, all of those, the reason they're so high is because they have these encumbrances that cover for more than one period, that's what's driving that cost to that way. And if we look at the total expenditure, we should be sitting around 20%, we're sitting on 21.2%, I think that's good, I think that's good, I, I think that would be a good statement. Does anybody have any questions on the P and L cost, sir?
Is there anything we need to be concerned with?
Uh, not at this time, sir, not that I am aware of, I, I don't know anything right now. Our revenues look pretty good, our costs are good, our encumbrances, I, I don't know anything that I'm aware at this time, so I'm good, I think I, I think that, not, not at all. Now, the other thing we want to show will be our investment, sorry, and we do this every month, and our cash position, basically, I'll cover that pretty much quick. We went ahead and we added $21 million to our ca, we, to our cash position, we went ahead and invested some there, so our total cash position is actually, the net effect is going down to $204 million. If we look at our interest rates, they're, they're at the rate that the market will let us within their thing, they're not stellar, but that is the rate, but it, it seems to be getting a little bit better, but it's, it's still at a low thing. So, if we look at our comparison, we're sitting on a spread for 13 weeks at 61%, and if we look at our 26-week, we're on 60%, so I, I mean, point six basic points. So, that is my report on the investment. Does, does anybody have any other questions on the investment or cost or any? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Chancellor.
Madam President and Board Members, the first item on my report calls for new staff introductions. The first one is Dr. Carlos Morales has not a new staff person, but a seasoned staff person in a new position. You may recognize this face from over the years, but you may also recognize her as having been here a few months ago, being introduced in a new position.
She can't keep it out.
And, and now she's back, being introduced in another new position. Dr. Morales.
Good evening, Chancellor Hadley, Ms. Appleman, and members of the board. I'm very pleased to come here and introduce the Vice President of Academic Operations for TCC Connect, Dr. Christine Hubbard, and she has 24 years of experience working in higher education, and she has taught in, at the University of North Texas, the University of Texas at Arlington, and at four of the five campuses of TCC. While she was at UTA, she worked as a coordinator for development, developmental reading and writing, and then as a coordinator of student success programs. She began her career at TCC as an agent instructor at the southeast campus, and she taught as an agent on the northeast, south campuses before joining the full-time faculty in Northwest Campus at the English Department in 2002. Dr. Hubbard has strong leadership skills and has been actively involved in campus and district initiatives, and she's well-versed in instructional technology and program assessment, as well as in the development and instruction and assessment of curriculum in a variety of delivery methods. So, here with us tonight is Dr. Hubbard.
Now, you, you can tell us anything you want to tell us about your new position.
Okay, well, I have enjoyed greatly my 17 years so far at TCC, and the opportunities I've had to work on all of the campuses. I would not be here tonight in this new position without the years of work that our Presidents, Vice Presidents, Deans, Department Chairs, and faculty have done to grow dual-credit e-learning and weekend college, and it's because of them and your vision that we now have connect. So I'm really looking forward to continuing to grow all of those areas and to provide services for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Dr. Joy Gates Black will come now to introduce her new person.
Thank you, Mrs. Appleman, Chancellor Hadley, members of the board. I am happy to welcome Ms. Nicole Mencone to TCC as our new District Director of Admissions and Records. Nicole comes to us from Wentworth Institute of Technology in Boston, Massachusetts, where she served as their registrar. Nicole previously worked as a registrar at UNT Dallas, as assistant registrar at Duke University, and registrar and director of enrollment services at LSU. Nicole has also served in various administrative positions in student affairs and student life at the Boston Conservatory, Bentley University, and St. John's University. Nicole has a Master of Arts degree in higher education administration from the Ohio State University. She has a Bachelor of Arts degree in history from Fairfield University, and she is scheduled to complete her doctorate of education in higher education from UNT in May of 2014. Nicole loves sports, you can find her cheering on her beloved Buckeyes along with the Red Sox, Patriots, Celtics, and Bruins. I've already told her, she's gonna have to change that. She also cheers for Duke basketball. She loves swimming, running, cooking, traveling, dancing, reading, movies, and live music. She has traveled throughout the continental U.S., Canada, and the Caribbean. Next on her list are Hawaii and Italy. Nicole's work experience, her strong passion to serve students, her demonstrated ability to lead teams, and her educational credentials will make her a great asset to our department. Please join me in welcoming Nicole Mencone.
Welcome, Nicole.
Thank you, Chancellor and board, welcome. Thank you for having me this evening, and thank you, Dr. Gates Black, for the warm introduction. I am so pleased to be back in Texas, especially here at TCC. I'm very excited about all the possibilities ahead, especially after being here this evening and listening to everything that's up and coming at TCC. It's an exciting place to work, as I've discovered in my first four days here, I started on Monday. So I'm really very much looking forward to the opportunity to work with you all and to bring continued success to CC, to TCC and its students, so thank you.
Welcome, thank you. Paul is not here tonight, is he? Paul Oyster? Of course, there's Paul, stand up, Paul. I'm gonna read about you here. This letter is from Futures Assembly, on behalf of Future Assemblies of, Future Assemblies. You don't know what Future Assemblies is? You'll know in a minute. It says, Dear Ms. Slacer, I am very pleased to inform you that Tarrant County College District's program, Improving Success in Sciences Without Sacrificing Rigor, has been selected as one of the 10 Bellwether finalist winners in the instructional programs and services category. Your college has been competitively selected to compete for the prestigious 2014 Bellwether Award at the upcoming Community College Futures Assembly. And I will add to that, I won't read the entire letter, but to tell you that Paul will be representing Tarrant County College at that conference, and they are also asking him to bring with him a board member or an administrator. And I'm sure, board members, that Dr. Jordan would push you back really hard if you said you wanted to go, because he's probably gonna be the one who wants to go and accompany his faculty member, and is it three of you can go? So one of the board members is welcome to go to that as well. I chose this Paul as one of the main things I wanted to highlight tonight about all the wonderful accolades that we can give, we have, you're exemplary of the many faculty that we have at Tarrant County College who are doing outstanding things such as this. Continue to bring us great recognition, and we are very, very proud of you. So thank you so much for your leadership on this, and we expect that you will represent us well, we know you will. Whether or not you win first place, you're in 10 of the top institutions in the country, and that is to be applied. and that is to be applauded. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I will tell you as another note, board members, you saw the work that one of our biol- biology professors, and help me with his name, Larry, is doing with research on the Northeast Campus in that wonderful greenhouse that he has that's growing all kinds of plants. Uh, Pfeiffer, Dr. Pfeiffer is, is so, and we've also had research projects on our other campuses. I'm just so very proud of how our faculty members are engaging our students in research techniques so that when they graduate from here and they go to the universities, they are ready to step right in, not miss a beat, and, and become researchers, perhaps even, you know, big research scientists. So, who knows what they're gonna come to. It's for the work. And, and this is not something that's required of our faculty, something they do on their own. So, accolades, accolades, accolades to all of our faculty and all those wonderful things. The second thing that I want to do is, is just read you a few excerpts from this Star Telegram article. It sounds like something I wrote for them, but I promise you I did not. It's entitled, "Your Success Is Within Reach." Your college wish list might include a world-class institution with flexible schedules, a convenient location, affordable tuition, and diverse programs. Some colleges may offer a few of these, but TCC delivers them all. TCC has five campuses conveniently located in Fort Worth, Hurst, and Arlington. Whether you are seeking college credit or continuing education, classes always in session with TCC's Distance Learning Program and Weekend College. TCC is regionally accredited, which means core curriculum credits transfer easily to most four-year colleges. TCC is the sixth-largest college or university in Texas, yet maintains a twenty-six-to-one student-to-professor ratio. Students have access to award-winning faculty and programs consistently recognized among the best in the nation. TCC offers students more than seventy fields of study and dozens of extracurricular clubs and associations from which to choose. The average cost for students enrolled in fifteen credit hours at TCC is eight-hundred-twenty-five dollars, compared to thirty-four-hundred dollars to seventeen-thousand-three-hundred at other local schools. Students often, often change majors in their first two years, but TCC eliminates the fear of sacrificing thousands in additional tuition dollars if you change your course of study. Since nineteen sixty-five, TCC has been committed to offering affordable and open access to quality teaching and learning. TCC provides opportunities to bring success within reach. Now, I said, it sounded like I wrote it, I didn't, but I do think somebody in our Public Relations and Marketing Department wrote that. And another reason why I wanted to read it is because, where's Suzanne? Did she have to sneak out? Well, Rita is here representing them all, because I wanted to give great kudos to that marketing staff, to the, um, the, um, or tw- what's our dudos? The graphic staff, and the third one is the web advisory. They are an awesome team, as you can see from the work that they presented here tonight. Just another thing that's really excellent about Tarrant County College. And so my last point tonight is to talk about the Saks visit. I sent everybody an email late this afternoon, offering a big cheer to everybody at Tarrant County College District, including our board members, because they were rock stars. I was told by the people who, from Saks, we interviewed them, how impressed they were and how this is the first college, our leader, Dr. Tard, this is the first college he's ever been to where he had six board members in attendance to talk to the Saks people. So, board members. He said they often have one, maybe two, board members to come and meet with them, but the fact that all of our board members were here to meet with them was very, very impressive. And so, board members, on behalf of all of our students and all of our faculty and staff, we know that it is your visionary leadership that has caused us to be where we are today. So as we prepare to celebrate our fiftieth year in existence with the people of Tarrant County in July twenty fifteen, we are indeed a strong institution, as evidenced by the report that we got from our visiting team from Saks. We are very, very excited about it. We are going to address the four mealy recommendations they gave us. And then we're going to prepare to keep rocking on down the road. They were very, very, um, complimentary of all the wonderful things that we're doing. So, board members, a great thanks to you. I want to point to two things on your left over there. Those two boards were put up in the Saks workroom, one called Points of Pride and one called Diversity and Inclusion Councils for our people to see. We put all kinds of information in the room for them so that they could really get a good glimpse of who we are, even though s- most of them visited the various, "Oh, you've got a copy of the room." Oh, my Shelley, you always got everything up there. Um, I went over to look at the resource room to make sure that, um, I, I just wanted to see, you know, I'm very inquisitive.
Knowsey.
Knowsey. So I was gonna run over and just take a quick look before anybody got down there from Saks, but surely enough, I got caught. And, uh, our Saks person, Dr. Koway, was, was over there. She walked in while we were there, and I was looking at the, the things on the table, and I saw these two books that they had put out of Fort Worth, and the books that we were in, right there on the left. That's it, on the left-hand corner, the second one. So I sneaked around to see if there were any tabs in the book that went right to TCC. I didn't see any, so I said to her, "Make sure when you open this book up, you look until you find Tarrant County College." She promised me she would. Uh, but it went extremely well, and I cannot give enough thanks to all of the people here at Tarrant County College who did all this wonderful work to make it happen. In addition to the folk who are here every day and get paid, we also had two other stars who stepped in to make sure that all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted. And it was actually, um, Maria Shelton's idea that we do the Points of Pride posters. So, Ms. Shelton came back to help lead us through that, and Dr. Linda Hines came back to help her. And so I want to publicly thank the two of them for the outstanding work that they did in working with our team to get us to where we are today. That's my report.
Thank you. Several things going on that the board has been involved in. Some of us attended, there's, yet, in addition to our foundation, there's the Mary I. Gorley Foundation, which works through financial aid and makes some really significant gifts to students. And some of us attended the luncheon where those awards were made a couple of weeks ago in another inspiring, keep plugging away, time. All of us went on campus tours last Friday, which was a great first step for the Saks process. I'm not sure how those of you who met and greeted us did it with everything else going on. You know, it was just extra company coming to your campuses, but we enjoyed our time, seeing your facilities, and meeting the, your faculty and staff and students. That, that really, I think, was the most meaningful part of those tours, and some of my fellow board members may want to comment on that. Yes, no? You agree with me? Okay, good. Uh, Dr. Jordan and I went down to Crowley a couple of weeks ago, and you know that we have a relationship with them and a learning center there. And I was really there because of my job-job as a relocation consultant, and I do a lot of work with companies in the southwest part of Fort Worth and Tarrant County that this, when families come who have students, Crowley ISD might be a logical choice. And Crowley ISD, like so many other school districts, hit, hit a little bit of a slump here in recent years, and they are pulling out of it. Dr. Dan Powell and his staff are making some great strides and invited Dr. Jordan and me, along with some of their community leaders, and youngest Jordan, who's on Fort Worth City Council, but whose district goes down into the Crowley School District. And they reported to us and asked for our help in letting people know that, once again, Crowley Independent School District is a viable option for students. So, they sent us home with a little propaganda, and I have several copies of this to share, or you can go online if you are ever in a position to counsel a student or family about the possibility of attending a Crowley school. Uh, Dr. Morrison and I had the pleasure of being on the Dunbar High School campus this week, and I'm gonna let her tell you how we happened to be there.
Well, we opted not to land in the helicopter, but we were there with students from three area elementary schools and three area middle schools and the high school, Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School, which has a gold seal program. And it's, uh, was a wonderful day, and there was lots of excitement, and we're looking forward to great achievements from the students there. We really wanted to thank our staff, Vice Chancellor Vaughn and his staff at the Opportunity Center. Uh, we also had members of the Aviation Department from Northwest Campus present, along with the Fort Worth ISD Representatives, City of Fort Worth Representatives. That's Gina Bivins shaking hands with the gentleman from Bell Helicopter. The Fort Worth Black Chamber of Commerce President was there. Fort Worth Chamber President, Fort Worth Chamber Representative. It was a wonderful collaboration. So we're doing great things, and we're looking forward to it. There was lots of excitement from all of the ages of students. So, it was a wonderful day in the neighborhood.
It was. And in addition to the high school students, they had elementary and middle school students, so we're starting the brainwashing early. And now, uh, yes.
Excuse me, one more point. I was talking to a little third grader, and I asked him about TCC, and he said, I said, "Well, there's a facility right behind here." He said, "Right here?" He could not believe that there was a TCC facility right there, you know, which is right behind our apartment, which is the TCC Opportunity Center. That goes back to my point of saying that we need to bring third to fifth graders to the campuses to let them know where we are, because it's not really in their daily route schedule. Thank you.
Excuse me. Southeast Campus has requested that we consider naming their library in honor of Dr. Judith Carrier. And we think that's a great idea. So, we have prepared a resolution which I would submit to the board for approval, whereas Dr. Judith J. Carrier rendered an exemplary record of service to the, to Tarrant County College spanning thirty-eight years, and whereas her professional career with the college began at the Northeast Campus in nineteen seventy-one, where she served as Counselor and Associate Professor of Psychology, and also as Chairman of the Department of Student Services, and ultimately as Professor of Psychology. And whereas Dr. Carrier was appointed in nineteen seventy-five as founding Dean of Student Development Services at the Northwest Campus and served there for thirteen years as Dean of Instruction and Student Development Services, and whereas Dr. Judith J. Carrier served with distinction as the founding president of the Southeast Campus in Arlington, Texas from February nineteen ninety-six until August two thousand and ten, and whereas her students, faculty, staff, and community all agreed that she mastered the role of Community College President. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees at Tarrant County College, upon the recommendation of the Chancellor and with the unanimous support of friends and colleagues throughout the district, have on November twenty-one, two thousand and thirteen, approved the recommendation that the library at the Southeast Campus be named the Judith J. Carrier Library and that it be dedicated to her with deep appreciation for her leadership, her community service, and her commitment to students. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I move for approval.
Mr. Heath, seconded by Ms. Vandergriff. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
With great enthusiasm. Okay, Chancellor?
Ms. Appleman and board members, please forgive me for coming back. I seem to do that much too often. But I would be remiss if I did not recognize the fact that this week, last week, I don't know, so many, the days run together, but that we received another check from the Texas Workforce Commission. Uh, Dr. Wells and his group keep bringing in the bacon. This one was for eight-hundred-forty-six, uh, seven thousand dollars and a little bit more that we accepted, um, on behalf of all of the people of Tarrant County. The money is going to be used to train workers at the General Motors Plant in Arlington. Uh, they will be trained on the new robotic equipment that they have. Four hundred-plus employees will be retrained. But there are also like seventy-plus positions for new employees. And we have been asking for that for, for quite a bit of time now, and the Texas Workforce Commission is doing that more often than not, giving money for us to train the unemployed and the underemployed. And so we are very, very appreciative of that. And along with that note, I will tell you something else I wanted to do. This primarily because of Judy McDonald, who is our wonderful partner at Workforce Solutions. Uh, Judy was invited to attend a session with me that was sponsored by the American Association of Community Colleges and the U.S. Council of Mayors, the U.S. Mayor's Council for Economic Development in Washington, D.C. the first week of November. And they invited Judy to come up and speak along with me because I had made a comment in a meeting about how we work so well together, Tarrant County College and our Texas Workforce Development Board. So the two of us made a presentation to that group, and they were really blown away at the relationship that TCC has with the Texas Workforce Commission. We had Texas, we had Workforce Commission leaders from others, other states throughout the United States there, and they were scratching their heads, "Well, you know, how do you do this? How do you do it?" So, we do so many exemplary things at Tarrant, in Tarrant County. Uh, you know, we're known for the collaborative spirit here in Tarrant County. And I just want you to know that it's being recognized every place. So, a very special kudos to Judy McDonald. I don't think she's ever missed one of our check presentations. Uh, and most of you know that Mrs. Appleman also serves on the Workforce Solutions Board, but she is determined that she never votes for anything for us, although she doesn't. But she doesn't, or she says it's a conflict of interest. But they vote for us without her vote, so that's, that's a very good thing for us. That votes well. And David, kudos to you and Troy Vaughn and all the rest of the staff, Jennifer Hawkins, for the wonderful work that you do, and those grants just keep coming. And a special kudos to Jack and Mack and her team for writing heard on all of those, helping us to write them to make sure they're done well, and then, of course, making sure that we carry them out the way we say we are going to, to do, so that we get accolades on all of that. So, I thought that was worth an addendum.
I can't believe we forgot that.
I had it yellow. I had it highlighted and still didn't do it.
I'm gonna do this a little bit back, so we're going to adjourn here in a moment, and I don't anticipate any action. We are going to go into closed session. But please know that our next meeting is December twelfth, but not at six P.M. It will be in the morning prior to the Chancellor's holiday breakfast, so I would say ten.
Ten-thirty.
Ten-thirty? Yes, ten-thirty. Okay. So, we will now go into closed session to deliberate real property, Texas, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two of the Texas Government Code, Personnel Matters, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, Texas Government Code, and Consultation with Attorneys, Section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, Texas Government Code. The meeting is adjourned until we reconvene. Yes, and yes, happy holiday and Thanksgiving to all of you.